It is six o'clock. I will call the August thirteenth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Pastor Knut from the Fort Chiswell Church of God to provide the invocation. If you would, please stand and remain standing for the pledge.
This all valid together? Our God, our Father, who art in heaven, how great is Thy most high and most holy name. We come humbly, our heavenly Father, thanking you for this day of life and the blessings that you so abundantly bestow upon us. We thank you for this occasion in which the leaders of our community can come together, those who are concerned citizens even. We thank you, our heavenly Father, for those who do serve in this capacity. We pray, our heavenly Father, that you will be with them, that you give them wisdom, guide them in what they do, help them that the decisions they make, the leadership they provide is according to your will and your word. We thank you, our heavenly Father, for all who serve in such capacities. We're even thankful for those who serve otherwise in our community, for those who serve in law enforcement and fire and in other ways. We ask that you watch over them and protect them, keep them safe, help them that they may come back to their families each and every night. We thank you, our heavenly Father, for the nation in which we live, for our freedoms that we enjoy each and every day. We continue to pray for our nation. We pray for our leaders. We pray as, we look about us and see so many things we know are abominable to you that are not acceptable. And we pray, our heavenly Father, that those of us who are Christian, who are moral, we can make a stand, that we can let our voices be heard, that we can do so in love, that we may affect a good change in our nation. We ask you to bless us, but we ask you to have mercy upon us as well. We ask that you continue here tonight in this meeting, keep all those who were present safe, continue to watch over us. We thank you so much for your son, who willingly died in our stead to provide a way of salvation. And it's through his name that we ask all these favors and blessings. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, as always, we'll start off with citizens' time. I'll call you up and you will have three minutes. Mr. Cook will keep the time. And the first person we have signed up is Ms. Becky Harrison.
Hello, I'm Becky Harrison from Royal Tree. I know most of you. And I just want to commend you on the improvements at Adrian Park. It's been a long time since I was at Adrian Park, since my youngest child is now thirty five. But I got to take my grandkids and on Thursday, when the rain was coming, and it's a great park, lots of climbing options, pretty neat. I was very pleased with it. And the reason we went to the park was the rain was coming. But we had a disappointment the previous week when we headed to the Royal Tree lake pool, which we visited a few times. Very nice. We had a ball there this summer. And low and above hill, we arrived and I said, oh, we're going to be the first ones here. Well, there was a reason no one else was there, because it was closed on Monday in August, which to me is still summer. Summer to me is when school ends and school begins. That's, that's a summer break. And I was just shocked to discover that I was so ignorant that the pool is closed Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday in August. But then I also, as I investigated, it's closed Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and June. But to me, June, July, and August until school starts is summer. Summer involves swimming. We spent a lot of money revamping that pool. Looks great. Kids have fun, adults have fun. It's very nice. But my question is, why are we underutilizing this facility? When we have limited options for our families, our kids, they have campers at the lake that are anticipating using the pool, and golf keepers. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, it's closed. So it's not because the lifeguards don't want to do it, they would like to have more hours in the summer to work. So I'm just questioning the why behind that. In our disappointment and my irritation, we headed to Marion. Never been to Marion Pool. My kids love it now. They don't want to go to Royal Tree. And so we went there on Monday and Tuesday last week, and then we went there on Sunday because they didn't want to go to Royal Tree on Sunday because they had so much fun. But I just think we need to really look at why this great facility that we've invested in is underutilized. And I would ask that you would investigate this, so we can serve the residents and visitors with county much better than the center. I tried, try and call the With County Parks and Recreation phone number. You will be shocked. You can't get through.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. That's all we have signed up for citizens' time. So we'll close citizens' time. We'll move on to our payment of invoices. Each board member has received in their board package a copy of the invoices that need to be paid. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to pay the invoices. So I have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Terry. Is there any discussion or any invoice that any board member wants to pull out? All right. Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from July the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett? Well, I was getting stereo over here. Is there any corrections or additions to the minutes as presented? Here and now, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. Move on to old business. We have the Fort Chiswell Library Agreement. Mr. Baer, I believe you have an update on that.
Yeah, at the last meeting, I provided you all a red line copy that had come from the With Grayson Regional Library Attorney that was not, very easy to read, a very small print. I've had staff retype that agreement. It is attached here. Mr. Supervisors Morgan and Supervisor Smith and I met with representatives from the Fort Chiswell Friends of the Library and with the With Grayson Regional Library Board and staff and had a meeting right now. The place we have it is that the library board and staff are to meet with Friends of Fort Chiswell Library and iron out a few differences they have on the final agreement. And then at that time, we will make any necessary revisions to this agreement and adopt and move forward. But just since it had on agenda last time, I just want to give you an update. No action is needed.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Baer on what he presented?
No.
Right. We'll move on to the next item, Rural Development Fire Department or Fire Truck Funding. Mr. Hankins, if I was a betting man, I would say this is yours.
I can take it, but I believe this part is actually Mr. Baer's.
Oh, well, I apologize, Mr. Baer.
Well, he can add in here. He has the trucks coming in, beginning of this month.
Trucks are expected to ship out of Alabama starting around the twenty-third. Should be here in time for your next meeting, at least one or two of them. So we're expecting the new truck for Max Meadows first and then the three others to follow after that.
And it looks like we have, excuse me, it looks like we have three items, loan resolution, a code of conduct, and a grievance procedure. I assume we need to take action on all three of those?
Yes, I would ask you to take action on the loan resolution separately, the code of conduct and the grievance procedure. I did not see any reason why those could not be adopted together.
Okay. With that being said, I open the floor for a motion to approve the loan resolution as presented.
So move.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any comments or discussion on the loan resolution for the fire trucks? Right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next, we have a code of conduct and section five oh four grievance procedure referencing that funding. I'll entertain a motion to approve those two agreements.
So move.
Have a motion by Ms. Lawson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Any questions or discussion on the motion at hand? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
So approved. Anything else for the fire truck funding?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to the Barrett Mill Water Project Funding.
This is a loan resolution for the one point nine million, thirty-two thousand dollars in loan money that we are to get from Rural Development. Would request that you all approve this loan resolution. Rural Development and our bond council fully understands, in the current bidding environment, we may have to relook at this and it may be a larger amount coming forward, but we do need to go ahead and drop this bond resolution to get this into Rural Development so we can proceed with advertising for bids.
All right. I open the floor for a motion to approve the Barrett Mill Water Project Funding Agreement.
So move.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion on that? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, we'll start with you.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Next item on the agenda is the BGCCC-A memorandum of agreement.
Yes, you all had previously approved a memorandum agreement, maybe about a month ago or so. I had added one line of language, just that the Department of Social Services would be our service provider under the scope of services. They rejected that amendment and requested it be in the top in item number one. So you will see it says this agreement entered into by With County by and through its Department of Social Services here and after called the service provider. So that was the only change. They just moved DSS out of item four up into item one. Ms. Ayers and Mr. Phil Blakenbecker and I have had fun discussing this with them in the process and our, well, my recommendation is to proceed with this revised memorandum of agreement and we will send it into them and see if we can suffice.
I wouldn't make a comment about lawyers, but part of the, I don't want to offend them. Entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the BJCCC-A.
So move.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett, I'll start with you.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Is there anything else under old business?
I did not have anything else, Mr. Smith.
I would just call something to your attention, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. I had sent an email to the members of the board, letting you know that we received an unsolicited email from one of the regional hospitals congratulating our emergency services staff for their good work in catching three stemmies or widowmaker heart attacks and flying those patients out. It was nice to receive that unsolicited feedback from one of our major regional hospitals that we're getting our patient care where it needs to be. And since we have some of our EMS staff here tonight, I just wanted to call that to the public's attention so that they're aware that we're exceeding the level of care that we thought we would be able to this early in providing the service on the EMS side. And since Mr. Morgan had asked for that to be made public, I thought this was a good opportunity to share it now.
And I'll just echo, I think that everybody that sits up here was anxiously nervous about taking over the two rescue squads, because anytime you make a move that bold, there's going to be hiccups, there's going to be operational things that you need to work on. But I said this at the county picnic Friday, the people that we have in place have far exceeded my expectations. You know, you're always going to have hiccups, but it's been a very surprising that, you know, patient care is above, way above what anybody expects. And as we make changes to improve the operational process down the road, it's only going to get better. And I think that's a testament to the bodies that we put in the positions.
Absolutely.
And we have had absolutely nothing to do with that. That's been you and Chuck. So you don't get many pats on the back, don't get used to it. They really have, you know, like I said before, you know, when I call nine one one, I just want something with flashing lights and professionals on it. And I think we've done that. So does anybody else have anything?
I rarely get the chance to deliver positive news, Mr. Chairman, so.
I wouldn't even point that out because it's just furry. Usually every time you say something, it costs money.
No, it's, you know, you hear it throughout the community as well. I mean, it's just a buzz to the community of, you know, the response times. I know we've had to go over from both sides of the county, the east and the west, to help cover, and it's noticeable and people are starting to recognize that. So it was good to see that email with unsolicited feedback back. So, I mean, as the chairman mentioned, we were all kind of nervous. That was a big chunk to take off for the county, but the groups that's in place is making it work. We've been tested over the last three or four weeks with different things that's happened in the county. So, you know, we can only get better from there, but I think we're serving our citizens well with the decisions that we've made here. So, you know, thanks to everybody that's involved. Chuck, I see you back there, the crew that's back there. Appreciate everything y'all do.
And while it's on the table for discussion, it is Chuck Parnell's birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy sixty-four, Chuck. In EMS years, absolutely. So, but Chuck, thank all your staff from us.
If I did, from the back, Mr. Greg Fraser's here, he's actually, he runs the EMS side under him, so he loves a lot of athletes.
We were going to thank him, but it was your birthday. It was ever truth spoken. Chuck just spoke.
So thank you, Mr. Fraser, for your hard work.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll move on to new business. We have the Mount Rogers Community Services Annual Performance Contract. I know we've all received that some time ago. Mr. Baer, and I know we have Ms. Bryant and several Mount Rogers administration here. I looked through it and we discussed it earlier. Do you have anything to add? I don't.
I have, I have nothing to add to it. I'd ask Ms. Bryant to be prepared just if there were any questions, but I did not anticipate any questions, did not have any problems with the amendment to the performance contract.
All right, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Baer, Ms. Bryant, or any of the Mount Rogers admin about the contract?
No, sir.
All right, here and now, I'll entertain a motion to approve the annual performance contract with Mount Rogers Community Services.
So move.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson?
Sure. I don't care. As long as it gets a second, it doesn't matter to me. I think our mics are low as well.
Is there any questions or discussion on that motion? All right, here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, I'll start with you.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Next item on the agenda is the Sheriff Department Budget Amendment. I know we have Sheriff Foster. And Mr. Baer has provided memos.
First and foremost, I want to thank all of you, this is a board with support that you have shown the Smith County Sheriff's Office this last week. I just ask that you continue to play for them and your agency as well. Also, I'd take the opportunity to thank each and every one of you for the picnic that was held last Friday. I just feel it's something nice we're starting with employees here and recognition of their work. And I know a lot of my employees and staff from the community that too as well. I met with Mr. Baer, Mr. Ball, Mr. Smith, a small budget committee meeting on the fourth of August and colonizing somewhat of a little bit. With the skyrocketing prices of police vehicles now being around forty thousand dollars, an agency can no longer afford five police cars. This was part of the contract from that back three to four sheriffs ago. And at the time, I could buy a police car for eighteen twenty thousand dollars when they were sheriff. Nowadays, with the cost of one being about forty-three to forty-five thousand dollars, about the ten thousand dollars to outfit it, you're looking at a total cost of about sixty thousand a year. So what I'm respectfully asking is that the county consider purchasing at least four police cars per year and equip those vehicles, police activity fund, and their law is just staying there. As I was telling Mr. Baer, I've got to get out of car line business. I can't afford it anymore. We've got a lot of grants. We've got a two hundred seven thousand dollar reimbursement grant, but I've also got three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that's going to have to be added back into that budget, the new grants that I hadn't even received yet. So that's where I stand. I just ask you consideration on it. I know pretty budget here when I come up and talk to you about it, Mr. Cook and some of the other board members, we make a statement, they didn't thank us too bad. And I totally agree with that. But if you would, I just wish you would take the time to examine that and let us know what results of that. I'd be glad to answer that question. I think I'd give Mr. Baer a copy of the actual state contract policy company.
And Sheriff Foster, you had mentioned a week back, last week, that vehicles are getting hard to come by. If you ordered them today, can you bring the board up to speed on what you told us on the length of time?
I really can't answer that question. I know Mr. Hankins and some of those that does the EMS part might do it, but basically we deal with a bill with Sinclair Hall in Bedford County, you can do a punch out, but I can't give you an honest answer on that.
The last ones we bought for emergency services were contracted and it, they gave us a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty day lead time, but that has been close to a year now, so I don't know where they stand with production.
And I apologize, Mr. Foster, I forgot Mr. Hankins was there and that was part of it.
I forgot, he mentioned it too. You know, the nintes and the problems that we have, I had one hit one that was not, almost ran out of fuel, but the officer was lucky, he was alive. In total, that did. So there's the one. I've had two or three deer hit in the last two or three weeks. This unforeseen circumstances beyond their control. So we have to wait until we get those vehicles repaired and just push the department in shortage and kind of find something for these guys to drive. And also, the vehicles are aging out. We've got somewhere hundred fifty, hundred seventy thousand miles on this. It's like devil out on a personal vehicle. That's worse than, and I appreciate any consideration you can do about that. Does anybody have any questions?
All right, of course, I'm conflicted out of the discussion, so I'll just open the floor for any discussion. Mr. Baer, I know you provided a memo, so it'll just be a free for all, I guess.
Well, I mean, for me personally, this goes into what we just talked about, the EMS. When we took it over, I mean, we have to provide the services for the citizens of the county and to make sure that we keep them safe, whether it be the rescue squads coming, fire departments coming, and the sheriff's departments coming. That falls under the same realm to me, so, you know, I don't have any issues with this, but I can't speak for everybody else.
Same for me, Mr. Smith. Either our sheriff's office needs to be in the car purchasing or selling business, we just need to take care of what needs to be taken care of for sure. I provided my memo to you all and obviously, what I based it off of was the budget that I included in there on page one oh two and one oh three. When the sheriff first presented his budget request this year, he actually requested in his budget that the sheriff's office would like to turn the police activity fund over to the county. There are some items sheriff's office are essential to making the function highest of citizens. And we talked about it and we decided not to do away with the police activity fund and just all the county. And we did this budget and that's where the budget came in and it had a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in vehicles. So it was the hundred and eighty thousand dollars there. And like I said, we had projected court fines and forfeitures of five hundred and four thousand. So we're just a month into the new budget. That's the only reason why I wrote my letter stating, you know, I understand that a hundred and eighty doesn't cover the full two hundred and thirty thousand that the sheriff is talking about. So, you know, the options are, if you want to fully fund this out of the general fund, then I would request that you all make a motion to amend and appropriate two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to thirty-one oh two motor vehicles and equipment. And then that would come out of the general fund and would not be coming out of this PAF fund. Alternatively, if you wanted to proceed with a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of vehicles here, but because of the shortfall on the court fines and forfeitures there, want to amend and appropriate fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund to come up with the two hundred and thirty thousand and that away, pretty much buying the vehicles here, but outfitting the vehicles from the general fund, however you all would like to proceed with that.
So on the PAF, Sheriff Foster, we had discussed it as well. And correct me if I'm wrong or if I misunderstood what you said. You were wanting to use that money to help fund some of the overtime?
Yeah, I would completely fund that. That's, that's the biggest caution that I have is the overtime. But in addition to that, we put uniforms on everybody, which you see me standing in here right now is a fifteen hundred dollar uniform. If I put a new man to work tomorrow, that's minus the base. That's about another five hundred dollars. We still have the gas line out and we're trying to purchase the gas. A paper records clerk downstairs that should be state comfortable funding, but it's not. We've been funding it for fifteen years and we still have money for it. And also the vehicle maintenance, so we're trying our best to help as much as we can. The board's been very good with it. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that they have it, but they've accepted positions. They took over, back in the day, the school resource program, funded those positions. And I hate to keep coming up here and asking for money, but I just can't afford to purchase four cars. And I really probably could use five a year, but if I could get four, I think that would keep me up. But it would have to be on a yearly basis.
I make mostly more than two hundred and thirty thousand dollars to what fund?
I meant, I meant two hundred and thirty thousand to thirty-one oh two, four seven zero zero three zero. And that would. And that would purchase the vehicles out of the general fund.
Yep, that's the one.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Cook. I believe I had a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any more questions or discussion on that? All right, here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 abstaining.
Aye.
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 All right, so approved. Anything else? Sheriff Foster?
No, I just want to thank you all very much for, for helping us out a whole lot. Thank you.
Hey, Sheriff Foster, I just want to thank you and your staff for helping out with Smith County. I know that, you know, we all got together and we, we sent our prayers and support that way, but your, your men and women from your staff had to go out and do that, so we do appreciate those, and I try to thank as many as I've run into.
You all eliminated a lot of the burn, uh, that was a lot of people tried to stand out there, the sheriff really wanted to spend his appreciation, Sheriff, sure. Also, I met with the board chairman, like, and some of the board members, and they said again, I thank you guys. Really appreciate what y'all have done and helping.
Yeah, so thank your staff for, for, you know, helping pick up in the, in the time of need like that. That's, that's, that's what neighbors should be doing, so. I'm sure they appreciate it, and just let us know if they need anything else. I mean, you will hear before we will hear, so just let us know.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next item on the new business is the Appalachian Center for Hope. We've got the opioid abatement award.
This, uh, as y'all remember, this was the, uh, Mr. Graham came and made the presentation on this. They were funded. Um, there are no local matching funds on this. However, since we are a partner in this, they require, um, us all to sign this. I would request permission to, uh, execute the operational agreement.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Bear to sign and execute the operational agreement for the Appalachian Center for Hope. So moved. And motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? I will just say that it is very much needed, and again, I congratulate Mr. Graham and, and everybody that worked on that. It's, uh, it's going to be a, a really nice project when I get it done, so. Um, with that being said, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry, I'll start with you.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else under old business, or new business, Mr. Bear?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Right, we'll move on to board reports. We have the water committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Water committee met on August fifth, twenty-twenty-four, and had the following recommendations. Number one, awarding the Dunford Road Water Project Preliminary Engineering Report Contract Appealing Boards.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
The second item was authorizing the county administrator to accept the VRA loan agreement and contracting Spillman, Thomas, and Battle to serve as bond counsel for the Austinville Sewer Treatment Facility Improvement Project.
Right, again, coming from committee, it's on the table or on the floor for a vote. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
So approved.
Third item is accepting the low bid and diversify for the water facility SCADA expansion project.
Again, it's on the floor for the vote. Coming from committee, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Fourth item is awarding Pepper's Berry Whispering Pines Water Improvement Preliminary Engineering Report and Environmental Review Contract to Matten, Mattern, and Craig.
All right, on the floor for a vote and our discussion, do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Fifth item is advertising a public hearing to consider a five percent increase to water rates.
All right, any discussion or questions on that one? Hearing none. Do we need to set a date?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you would, can we set September tenth as the date for that?
So we need, do we need to do a whole new?
I think I'd just do a motion and a second on that, since that was not originally part of the, uh, committee recommendation.
And what was the date?
September tenth.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to advertise a public hearing for September fifth for consideration. Tenth, I'm sorry. September tenth for the consideration of a five percent increase to the water rates. So moved. Have a motion by Mr. Morgan, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Any questions or discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? So approved.
Adopting the online payment options fee for water and wastewater payments.
Again, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion or questions on that? I do have one, just for clarification, to make sure I read it right. If people decide to do the ACH, there's no fee.
They, they fill out a form, send it into our department. They would get their bill and it would, it'll be coming out automatically on the fifteenth of the month. That would be withdrawn at no charge.
Cause I do a couple of bills like that, and, and I'm cheap. Uh, so I don't mind filling out that form out if I can save the three percent. Absolutely.
I was just going to say, since this is something new, maybe we could provide more information right now regarding exactly what we're doing, just to the citizens, so.
That, we were looking at possibly trying to put a flyer in the, in the water bill, just to let them know what's coming up, and then, um, you know, sharing, it, it don't, probably won't show the entire PowerPoint presentation as long, but sharing information through our PIO online of, of the, 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 uh, options that are available to the citizens.
And that's going to make a lot of people happy.
Especially Dr. House.
Yes. I've asked him to use him as the original guinea pig on the ACH payments if he's interested.
If you'll, if you'll print that flyer out, I'll hand deliver it. All right, does anybody else have any questions or discussion? Right, here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Aye. So approved.
And the last item, the chairman, is writing off final bill accounts on the attached listing, listing to establish a policy that unpaid final bill amounts less than fifty dollars be written off after thirty days.
All right, is there any questions or discussion on that one? Um, Mr. Bear, I do have one on the, the final part of that about the, the writing off the bills less than fifty dollars. Is that? So I assume this is after cutoffs?
This, this is typically, um, most of these occur, and, and I'm just going to use Mr. Terry here. Mr. Terry's renting a house in, in Austinville. He moves out, uh, we have the final bill, we apply any deposits that we require in the process. Uh, and we send a, a final bill. And then, um, after that, if that balance is unpaid, up to the fifty dollars, we're, we would recommend writing off. The reason in most of the time, and a lot of these, not all of these, but a lot of these are rental situations where.
Well, that, that was going to be my next question. If you've got a, if you've got a, a twenty-dollar balance in Mr. Farthing, I, I believe it's, it's twenty-four dollars to file the warrant debt. And you file a twenty-four-dollar warrant debt, and they've moved, and you can't get service.
Yep.
So.
I, I mean, it's, that's, that's why this is recommended. We, it's, it's most of the time, most things you can't find, yes.
All right.
Do I like this?
Oh, absolutely, but. But from my former life, the county's wasted a lot of money trying to recover some of these debts on these rental situations, because people moved and you have to have, uh, some type of service on, on the, on the process. And that's, you know, you know, and I know, um, Ms. Gwens had, had tried over the years on the same thing on tax service. Um, when people don't pay their bills, they tend not to update their address. All right, does anybody else have any questions or discussion on that one? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from the water committee? I'm sure. All right, we'll move on to the buildings and grounds committee.
The building and grounds committee met on August sixth, twenty-twenty-four, and recommends the following. Amendment appropriating two thousand dollars to the building and grounds budget for various county roadsides.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion on that one? Right, here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Second item is setting a public hearing to consider amendment number two to the ordinance nine-nine dash two solid waste ordinance. This amendment requires trash collected and with counting by licensed collectors to be taken to the with land joint public service authority transfer station.
All right, is there any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Hearing now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. That's it from buildings and grounds?
That's it, Chairman.
All right, we'll move on to budget committee. I believe it's Mr. Smith.
Budget committee met on August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, took the following actions. Approving the updated victim witness grant.
All right, coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that one? All right, here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Approving the interim financing with key government finance for the Barrett Mill Water Project.
Again, coming from committee, it's on the floor for a vote. Any questions or discussion on that recommendation? Right, here now let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. I believe that's all from the budget committee.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
If, may I, it, um, I handed out one item. Uh, I did not have this in time for the budget committee. This, this came today. I didn't want to put it under new business, because it's related to this key bank financing. Um, the refinancing of this provides us with the interim financing funds for our Barrett Mill Road Project, uh, which role development requires us to fund this upfront, and then they'll reimburse us. This is the proposal from Spillman, Thomas, and Battle to, to serve as bond counsel for us on this. And that fee is, uh, ten thousand dollars, which includes all out-of-pocket fees and everything else. I would request, if, uh, you all don't mind, to, uh, authorize county to, staff to enter into that agreement with, uh, Mr. Day for bond counsel.
All right, I'll open the floor for that motion.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Morgan. Any questions or discussion on that recommendation? All right, here and now we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Burnett?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else, Mr. Bear?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to board member time, and since Mr. Burnett had such a long agenda, I'll start with Mr. Terry.
I have nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Morgan?
I have one thing, uh, Mr. Bear. I went to the Speedwell Fire Department meeting last week. And, and I understand this has been talked about, but, uh, they need to be made aware of bills that are paid by the county. And I want to make sure that's.
Um.
I know y'all have talked about it with them, but I want to make sure.
I, i- if I may, Mr. Morgan, um, there's a reason why they didn't show any bills being paid, uh, in July. It's because they didn't have any bills to pay in July. Uh, so the report that they, they got should be accurate. Um, and I think we have made the adjustments on the finance side to make sure that every invoice that gets paid, they, they know uh, who that's, that's being paid, uh, to, and, uh, how much was paid on their behalf.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Smith?
Mr. Bear, I know I'd sent a, a email, um, sometime last week about some issues on road issues. Some of them's been taken care of, so I'll thank them. Thank Mr. Schwartz and his team for taking care of the visibility issues coming out of Lockscap on the Avenue Road across from Ricky Road. Uh, the other pieces right there in ninety-four, it's about a quarter mile, a half a mile above the intersection of Fort Chuzzle Road near Mr. Johnson's residence. The, the road's coming apart in the center, right in that curve.
Okay.
And I'd sent that. Um, and then the other thing is just let Mr. Schwartz know that they have some happy residents in Doe Run. That road has been, uh, asphalted now, so they are very extremely happy. Um, and we've talked about them getting water down there, so I know it's on our radar, but uh, let them know that they're very pleased with the work that they've done on the road. That's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Cook? Uh, well, I'm talking about roads. I just, you can give them a compliment, too. Virginia's got the best roads. I've, I, I've ridden on rough roads from Sturgis all the way back, and once I got to Virginia, it was a whole lot better road. So we got better roads anyway. The only thing I really have is I've gotten a couple of complaints on trash. I see we're going to redo the ordinance, but in the meantime, uh, they need to be told that people don't have to smash plastic bottles and all that to get it to, to recycle them. I mean, the, the things they're asking to do, in my opinion, are absurd.
My staff has, um, met with them and discussed, uh, the, 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 the recycling issues that, you know, there are some bottles that can be crushed, but a majority of the bottles nowadays cannot be crushed in the process, so they are, they are working with them on that. Yeah. That's all I have.
All right, Ms. Lawson?
Well, while we're on roads, this might be the only second time ever that I've talked about roads during my supervisor time. Um, but Atkins Mill Road, Mr. Bear, if you could get with VDOT and see what the paving schedule is between like the wastewater plant and Whipper Will. That was Atkins Mill. And then, do you all have an update on the connector road project as far as Lover's Lane area?
I do not have any details or any information. I don't, and I, I do not recall how long when they closed that road. They said it was going to be closed, but it was quite a while, but it.
Okay, then I might be mistaken, because I thought it was like thirty days. No? Okay.
Yeah, it was.
About a year, I think.
It's like, yeah.
Look, so, so Lover's Lane, that whole section's going to be closed that long?
Yes. I, I, I will get an update and, and get that to you as to what they put out on that, but yeah, it seemed like it was a year or longer in the process.
I thought it was ridiculous at the time.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, okay, I'm, I guess I'm mistaken then, because I thought it was just that area right there. It just seems like you could do something to at least let, I don't know, do that part and let vehicles travel through, because, you know, but it'll be nice when we get it and it's worth it, but I know it's aggravating to the citizens out there, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson, Mr. Burnett.
I don't have nothing at this time, Chairman.
All right, I've just got a couple of things. Um, I wanted to thank, uh, the county staff for the, the county picnic last Friday. Um, that we, um, luckily were able to move the moose log because of, um, tropical storm, Hurricane Debbie, whatever it was, um, which turned out to be a beautiful day. Um, but sometimes that's what happens. But, uh, you know, Todd Catcher, Kevin Williams, uh, Melissa Kegley, uh, Maya Halfley, done a great job on the food. Um, you know, it, it, it almost, it almost made me feel bad that we had a, a county picnic for staff by the amount of work our staff put into it, that they didn't get to, to enjoy it. Um, but I got a lot of comments and poor, uh, Todd Catcher has seen it. Um, his position is cook for every county picnic that we have until he retires. And I told him that I had more people asking me who was cooking, uh, than anything about the picnic, but they did an excellent job. And, and I just want to echo, um, what Sheriff Foster said about helping out Smith County. Um, I did go out there Saturday and, and I'm keeping with what I've done in the past, I, I won't turn any overtime. I'll, I'll get comp time or I'll just eat it, but you know, the, the, the amount of citizen support, the people that stopped me and, and thanked me for being there. the people that stopped me and thanked me for being there was just great. And with that being said, you know, in the first responder community, a lot of times the EMS folks get forgotten about, but, you know, they work hand in hand with these men and women in law enforcement. So, I would ask that we at least extend the offer to provide EMS staff to cover so they can attend the funeral if possible. That's why I like you, Chuck. You're always one step ahead of me. That says a lot. But with that being said, that's all I've got. Is there anything else to come before the board? All right. We'll be adjourned. Thank you.